No, but it's not get home every night. What's up? Hey, good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the CRMC to address the dispositive motion filed by the objectors. I know that Mr. Bowen and Mr. Bowen had brought up some issues outside. You could address those.
Yeah, so tonight we're here on a dispositive motion. And specifically, this is objectors' joint motion to dismiss and/or in the alternative for summary judgment and/or for declaratory ruling judgment. What this means is it's really a matter between the applicants and the objectors attorneys. It's a matter of law, it's not a matter of fact. It's a question of whether, in this specific motion, whether a new state law is going to preclude the hearing officer and the agency generally from hearing the application from the Bowens. As part of that process, we will just be hearing the arguments tonight. And other than the statements made by Mr. Libby and the Bowens who are here as, not as attorneys, this is again, it's simply a matter of law and not a matter of testimony, except for those comments that come from the Bowens and Mr. Libby.
If this is not a hearing on the merits of your application, do you have any questions regarding that? This time, no?
In, Mr. Krieger anticipating that there will be comments coming from Mr. Libby and the Bowens, I'd ask that they be sworn in before we get going because I anticipate that everybody's going to be speaking tonight.
Can I ask a question in that regard?
Yes.
Given that it is my understanding that only attorneys have the ability to cross-examine an applicant or a witness, Mr. Libby here is acting pro se and not as an attorney. And he had earlier filed a motion requesting the ability to cross-examine. And I don't know that that was ever addressed.
That, that's correct, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Libby's motion has not been addressed yet. Given the request for emergency stay of the prior scheduling order and the submission of a motion for declaratory ruling and/or motion dismissed and/or summary judgment on the new state law, the matter at hand isn't whether Mr. Libby can testify or can cross-examine at this point, it's really a matter of law. Given the, the current motion, more succinctly, I suppose, the that motion that Mr. Libby filed is basically one of the motions that's been stayed. It was part of the regular course of proceeding and that's been sidetracked with this current motion that we're here to have argument on tonight. So really, the question of cross-examination and testimony isn't relevant to tonight's hearing.
Will Mr. Libby be able to directly question us as applicants?
No.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, this is, this is, in, so, again, this is really a here-for argument between the parties and it's not about cross-examination, so we're really just here to hear what the objectors have to say and hear what the Bowens have to say in response. So even questions that may typically happen at a subcommittee or a hearing like this, sometimes we request that the questions to another party be asked through the chair or Mr. Krieger, but in this case, because it's just a dispositive motion hearing, there isn't even any opportunity for cross-examination or questions across the table, let's say. It's really just to hear the arguments from both sides on the dispositive motion.
So, so as it's the objectors' motion, we're going to hear from them first. And then we'll hear from you. Thank you. Mr. Wagner, Mr. Decatell?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We need to swear in all the non-attorneys. I'll start with Mr. Libby. Mr. Libby, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Donald Libby, D O N L I P P E Y. My address is 453 Neck Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. And Mr. Owen, Mr. Bowen, I can, I can actually swear you in at both at the same time.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, help the God I do.
Now, will each of you please state and spell your name for the records?
Patrick Bowen, P A T R I C K, B O W E N. John Bowen, J O H N, B O W E N.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hearing Officer. I'm Attorney Marissa Decatell. I represent Kenneth and Liz Mendez, who are part of the objector party. This is, as Mr. Hartman explained, the objectors' joint motion to dismiss and/or motion for summary judgment and/or motion for declaratory judgment. We intend to move forward with our argument tonight based only on undisputed and uncontested facts. To that end, I wanted to begin my argument with a reminder about what those undisputed and uncontested facts are in this case. To start, as an undisputed fact, the application by its own terms requests an assent for a commercial aquaculture farm. These facts come from our memo, paragraphs 1, 3, 6, 7, 47, and 48. The undisputed fact and clear and unambiguous language of the statute that Attorney Hartman referenced, excuse me, is that the Rhode Island General Assembly passed a law very recently, effective June 29, 2024, which includes language that Sepauk Cove, quote, "shall not at any time be commercially developed or in any way modified from its current undeveloped state," end quote. That comes from our memo, paragraph 33. And lastly, undisputed and uncontradicted fact that the Bowens' application shows that the location of their proposed project is within the commercial development exclusion zone as referenced in state law. These facts come from our memo, paragraphs 34 through 46 and 49 through 60. The statute that I'm referencing, Rhode Island General Law 32-1-5.2, unambiguously prohibits a commercial aquaculture farm in Sepauk Cove, as I said. The application has been rendered moot by the passage of Rhode Island General Law 32-1-5.2. A commercial aquaculture lease located in Sepauk Cove would be a direct violation of this statute's prohibition of commercial development in Sepauk Cove. The clear language of the statute indicates that the prohibition is not limited to the future. The statute provides that Sepauk Cove shall not at any time be commercially developed or in any way modified from its current undeveloped state. The necessary implication is that the legislature intended the statute to have retroactive effect with respect to any potential commercial development or modification of the Cove from its current undeveloped state. The Bowens have no vested rights that would immunize their application from the prohibition of development. There is no constitutionally vested right here as the subject property is held in public trust for the people of the state of Rhode Island and is governed by the Federal Submerged Lands Act and the State's Aquaculture Act. The powers and duties of the CRMC are constrained by its enabling legislation, its own regulations, and the provisions of the Rhode Island Administrative Procedures Act. The CRMC is legislatively authorized to grant permits for the conduct of aquaculture pursuant to the Aquaculture Act. There is no statutorily vested right here because there's no language in the CRMC Enabling Act, the State's Aquaculture Act, or the Federal Submerged Lands Act that allows for it. As compared to Rhode Island's zoning laws, which contain vesting language, the statutes at play here are all unrelated. The State's zoning laws are not applicable to the subject's application and do not provide vesting right. In the absence of specific vesting language, there can be no vested property rights in public trust property absent a CRMC assent and a signed and approved lease by the state. As a matter of fact, the CRMC has not granted any assent for the subject's application. Without the CRMC assent, there can also be no lease agreement. Keep in mind that the lease process also includes the State Properties Committee process. That's an entirely separate entity with an entirely separate timeline. What this means is that a matter of law and fact, there is no contractually vested right in the application. I'd like to talk a little bit about the statute that I mentioned, which prohibits commercial development at any time. Again, this is Rhode Island General Law.
Mr. Decatell, what, at any time, you stated earlier that it's clear that the language of the statute has retroactive effect, what, where do you find that?
The language that I'm quoting directly from the state law is that Sepauk Cove shall not at any time be commercially developed. That comes right from the statute.
And how is that retroactive?
At any time encompasses any time.
May I, may I interject to answer your question directly?
Absolutely.
No.
The statute, as you know, the Supreme Court has held that statutes and amendments are typically applied prospectively. However, if it appears by strong lang, clear language or necessary implication that the legislature intended the statute or amendment to have a retro effect, a retroactive effect, then it is given a retroactive effect. So here, we have a statute that has strong, clear language and a necessary implication. Now, that's where, if you look at the statute, it's, it's clear that it says Sepauk Cove shall not at any time be commercially developed or in any way modified from its current undeveloped state. Necessary implication from the plain language of the statute is that the legislature intended the statute to have retroactive, retroactive effect.
Why didn't they say that?
What's that?
Why didn't they say that?
Well, they didn't have to say it because at the time, the Sepauk Cove is undeveloped. And what they're saying here is it never should be developed. It says shall not at any time be commercially developed. They didn't have to say this statute shall have retroactive, retroactive effect because there was no vested rights existing. There was no leases in the Cove at the time. All that existed at the time was a pending application for an aquaculture farm. As we set forth in our brief in detail, that's not a vested right. That's not, that's not a contract, it's not a property right, it's not, it's not anything. So at the time they enacted the statute, it's very clear that they, they, they wouldn't have said, no retroactive. But the Supreme Court has said, if the clear language of the statute or, and this is, and this is what I really think is important for you, or necessary implication that the legislature intended the statute or amendment to have a retroactive effect, it should have a retroactive effect. The legislature clearly intended that Sepauk Cove remained in an undeveloped state.
What cases you citing?
Any case, I, I, the Lawrence versus Inhiza-Bush case, we cited in our brief. It's 523 A2, 864. And that's at page 1889, date of the case is 1987. But that, you can look at gobs of cases that talk about the presumption of prospective application. And they all say the same thing. They all say that if the clear language of the statute or the necessary implication of the statute, and here it's impossible to read this statute and not understand that the legislature, who has plenary authority in fisheries, that has absolute authority to legislate in this area, it clearly indicates that at no time, I shall not at any time should that be developed or modified from its current, at this point it's undeveloped, it shouldn't be developed. And there's no other way to read that than it applies not only to the future but retroactively to everything. I'm sorry, but you can continue.
Okay. I think Attorney Wagner has done a good job of summarizing what I was going to get into next. So I'll be short, that as my brother indicated, the legislative intent here is clear and unambiguous. Shall not at any time be commercially developed. Shall not at any time, to me and to anyone reading the statute, any time means any time, past, future, present. Also, the legislature-
If a part of, if a part of that code was previously commercial, you're saying that this statute would wipe that out?
When you say "commercial," are you, are you talking about an assent and a lease that has been provided and assigned?
Commercial, I'm talking about any commercial use. Since the legislator, I believe, in testimony for the bill said that clearly this wasn't about the oyster farm.
No, first of all, Mr. Hearing Officer, that's completely irrelevant because you don't look to anything but the plain language unless it's ambiguous. So, so, so there's been testimony going all over the place. I think we can all stipulate that the General Assembly was very concerned about Sepauk Cove and the aquaculture farms going in there. So I don't think that's a big surprise, but in terms of interpreting the statute, what, what, what happens at that, those hearings is completely irrelevant because we have an unambiguous statute here that talks into your, to your question previously. They wouldn't, they wouldn't have said in the statute that it's, that it's undeveloped if there was commercial development in the statute. Now, I think, to answer your question directly, I think if the Bowens had a lease agreement with the state at the time that this was enacted, they have an argument that they have a vested right for that lease to continue until it's going, until the lease is up, and then this would then kick in. Our, our position is they didn't have a vested right. They had, they had a pending application and that doesn't meet the requirement of a vested right. And the statute on its face is retroactive.
Okay. A commercial aquaculture lease located in this area, it's our position, would be a direct violation of the statute that we're talking about. The area covered by the new statute constitutes a hard constraint where commercial aquaculture is prohibited. And it's our position that the CRMC is required to adhere to that law. So for the reasons that we're talking about tonight, and I'm sure we're going to continue to talk as well as the description and arguments in our pleadings, we are respectfully asking that the pending application be dismissed as a matter of law or summarily decided and/or declared moot as a result of Rhode Island General Law 32-1-5.2. Thank you.
Gentlemen? Want to go first?
Yeah.
Sure. So we, my brother Patrick and I first applied, submitted our preliminary determination application in December of 2019. Yeah, the objectors' attorney brought up the Supreme Court and Justice Thurgood Marshall said of ex post facto laws, "The framers sought to assure that legislative acts give fair warning of their effect and permit individuals to rely on their meaning until explicitly changed." And the ban also restricts governmental power by restraining arbitrary and potentially vindictive legislation. I think you kind of hit the nail on the head with that ex post facto. This is changing the law halfway down the road. The law clearly amounts to spot zoning, the litmus test of which is whether or not the, the law is in conflict with the town's comprehensive community plan. Clearly, in many areas of the Tiverton Community Plan, it is in conflict with it. The application cannot, it is not and can't be declared moot as it relates to serious constitutional rights, which my brother and I have, under Article 1, Section 17. What are those rights? The right to the trade of the fishery carried over under the Royal Charter of 1663. The new law doesn't mention oyster farming, nor the prohibition of oyster farming. Representative Edwards, as was pointed out during numerous hearings, stated repeatedly, this is not about precluding oyster farming. The preamble to this 35-1-5.2, 30, excuse me, 32-1-5, does allow for the DEM to lease any and all part of the management area for any purpose that they see fit. Additionally, aquaculture is included within the definition of agriculture under Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 223-4. And the area that we were, that we chose, we chose partly based upon the agricultural soil type, sandy, subaqueous, and ideal for oyster farming. And in that regard, that soil is protected under the Rights of Farm Act. This law is one of the most ambiguous laws I've read, both in its intent and its description of a location. It refers to a, a location that they refer to as Sepauk Point, which is not a pin in the ground from which you can take a measurement. The Power Point is analogous to Black Point, Enforcement, Warren's Point, Sakonit Point. It's an area, it's a region, it's not a point from which you can describe a measurement, meets and bounds. Representative Edwards, when developing this, sat down with the lobbyist for a CRMC applicant, Francis McMahon from South Coast Wind, to develop a map of the area. It seems a direct conflict of interests. If, if there's a, to be an area to be blocked off, it seems the state of Rhode Island should be doing that in Coastal Resources Management Council. And to my knowledge, CRMC has not published a map of a commercial use prohibition area in Sepauk. The language in describing this area, if I could read it for a moment, Sepauk Cove, comma, "an area of water that runs from Sepauk Point easterly to the bridge and then southerly, perpendicular to Sepauk Avenue." So Sepauk Avenue runs north to south. When you run southerly, that's not perpendicular, that would be a parallel. So clearly, that's confusing at best and incorrect at worst. Shall not be used for any so the water at the mouth of the marsh for a distance of, the water at the mouth of the marsh, comma, "for a distance of 2,000 feet from the bridge to Sepauk Point." If you look on the map, that's not 2,000 feet. Measured in a southerly direction from the shoreline. The shoreline is almost at a right angle, doesn't delineate which shoreline they're speaking of. It's very confusing language. It, there's no starting point, there's no spot set aside. If we were to retract our application and reapply, we wouldn't know where we would be allowed to apply to be compliant with this. There's no state map.
If I may, what is the intent of this law? It should be noted that Representative Edwards, in the previous two years, this being his third year in submitting legislative proposals, in the previous two years, he submitted legislation which would have restricted aquaculture statewide. Explicitly, legislation intended to restrict aquaculture. Both of those attempts were dead in committee and went no further. This, in his third attempt, makes no explicit mention of aquaculture. And as has been noted, in fact, he, in front of committee, in committee, said on more than one occasion, "This is not about an oyster farm." Now, what is the intent of this? It seems to me if Representative Edwards wanted to restrict or exclude oyster farming, then that language should have been explicit. The language in this law is, in fact, ambiguous. And I would further suggest, if the intent of this legislation is to restrict commercial activity in this area, some refer to as Sepauk Cove, does that also restrict commercial fishing? Commercial lobstering, commercial comp fishing? And has any fishing organization been notified of such restriction or prohibition? And what constitutional rights are being taken from commercial fishermen in this state? I would go on to say that the waters that are being described are categorized by the CRMC as Type 1 waters. The most restrictive waters that CRMC categorizes. And under 1A, water areas that are within or adjacent to the boundaries of designated wildlife refuges and conservation areas. So prior to any legislation, this body of water has been protected in the most stringent manner. I would further go on to say that there are objectors and proponents of this legislation whose property runs on this body of water with what would now be prohibited seawalls. Seawalls are not an allowed entity, a commercially developed structure in Type 1 waters. But because these existed prior to CRMC's founding, they're allowed to be there. It should also be noted that two of these objectors, whose property contains seawalls, have applied for permits to repair these seawalls. And so it seems to me that these very permits would in fact be a modification of an undeveloped state. And those seawalls are in fact a part of the so-described Sepauk Cove. Because at high tide, one cannot, perhaps submerged, they're underwater. And someone cannot traverse that shoreline without taking one's safety into consideration. So the same people who were objecting or proponents of this legislation themselves have seawalls which restrict access to the shore. The question remains, if commercial development of any kind is prohibited in this described area, is commercial fishing also prohibited? And it seems to me, more than unusual, that the same legislation that's trying to restrict farming in state-controlled waters makes specific provision for terrestrial farming in what is a state management area.
Commercial terrestrial farming.
Commercial terrestrial farming of approximately 50 acres in Sepauk Management Area. And so I would submit that this law is not, as described by objectors, unambiguous. In fact, this law is extremely ambiguous. And I would question the intent of that. If it was Mr. Edwards and Mr. De Palma's intent to disallow aquaculture, then that should have been explicitly noted in this legislation. Thank you.
I have a couple more points if I could make. I've wanted to, to look at the allowed uses within this new law, 32-1-5.2. The allowed uses include restoration, conservation, and management of fish and wildlife. And shellfish aquaculture is a type of restoration, as defined by the Nature Conservancy. From the, from the initial application, it's been our intent to raise diploid oysters, or those capable of reproducing, and supplanting the natural recruitment of oysters in the area. Additionally, there have been, have been peer-reviewed papers documenting that aquaculture gear serves as artificial reefs supporting marine habitats and have been recommended to be utilized in habitat restoration programs. supporting marine habitats, and have been recommended to be utilized in habitat restoration programs. Oyster farming is not a change of use of the area. Tiverton's oyster farming history dates back more than a hundred years, per C R M C's own presentations. And finally, to, to delve a little more into Article One, Section Seventeen, which carried over the rights held under the Royal Charter. It carries forth the right to exercise the trade of the fishery upon the coast or in any of the seas, arms of the seas, or saltwater rivers, creeks where we've been accustomed to fish. Trade of the fishery by definition is commercial. And at the time, at the time of the Constitution in eighteen forty-two, Rhode Islanders were accustomed to oyster farming in Tiverton. So thirty-five-one-five-point-two is in direct violation of the Rhode Island Constitution and must be declared void based on Article Six, Section One of the Constitution.
In Article Six, Section One of the Rhode Island Constitution, and, and what does that say?
It says that a law which is in conflict with the Supreme Law of the State of Rhode Island is by definition void.
I, I would only go on to suggest the allowed uses of this particular body of water. Passive outdoor recreation, as noted here, includes hunting. We are both hunters. I don't know that I consider that to be passive outdoor recreation. Would it also include jet skis?
It does not include sailing. Or boating.
There are a few uses here that are stipulated. It should also be noted that, in the absence of any commercial activity, a recreational lobster pot license holder. I could put five recreational lobster pots in this described area. He could put five, and every family member from here, Little Compton, could have their five in that area as well. And so realizing that, I don't know if that contradicts with the intent of this legislation. But trying to exclude commercial activity within that does not necessarily preclude similar uses.
Follow up, I guess I'd like to respond a little bit.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions first. In your in your memorandum and the exhibits, we've had a hard time determining, since you didn't give us color maps. You have color map?
Yes. I, I think.
For example, the South Coast Wind. Where is there? You have another set of Bowens?
We'll give this one.
And if you, if you know, Freddie Wagner, or Toody Desatell, or Melissa Libby, who, who drafted the the language, setting forth the dimensions of the the area that was supposed, supposed to be included in the statute thirty-two-one-five-point-two?
Legislature.
So, so that was not taken from South Coast Wind or, or the the Google Earth, anything like that?
Not sure, well, that's the question. They, the statute speaks for itself. We provided affidavits in exhibits that established that the proposed aquaculture farm is located in the prohibited commercial development. So the applicants have failed to provide any counter affidavits and raise a genuine issue of material effect. So I, I think it's, it's undisputed before this body that the Bowen's proposed commercial aquaculture farm is located inside the prohibited commercial development area of Sapawat Cove. Sapawat Cove. It, it's really not even a close call. This is absurd that they would raise that as an issue. Uh, it, it's clearly within the, we provided the affidavits to show that.
Where's the South Coast Wind corridor?
Good, Mr. Krieger, it's the light green in the multicolor.
So it's.
So, yes, I, I have it now.
It was difficult with a black and white determine that. So, uh, the South Coast Wind Transmission Corridor is not within this area?
That's right. That's right. That's the green area is, is the corridor. The dark blue is the code.
So happened to you, um, did you want to raise any points?
Well, I, I do actually have a question for the objectors. As far as, as the legislative intent, doesn't the the statute provide that the passage, or the, the statute shall take effect upon passage?
Yes.
And wouldn't that indicate that that's a prospective application of the law?
No, I, I think even when you have statute that specifically says statute's going to be retroactive, they say that it affect on passage. That's just administrative.
Language.
Sure. Okay. That, that's why it came up in one of the cases that I've been looking at. Actually, and I have two cases that address whether, it, it kind of goes to the vesting issue a little bit. And maybe we can have both sides weigh in. But to me, there's this case, Cavaney, the Town of Cumberland zoning order review. And that's at eight seventy-five Atlantic, second one. And this case goes into a similar situation in which a comprehensive, or let's say it was a zoning application was put into play. And then after the application was submitted, the legislature changed the law. And the Supreme Court determined that despite the change, that the law in effect at the time of the submission of the application is the law that should be used for the application.
So that's a correct result because there is a specific statute in the zoning context that, that grants substantially complete applications the right to a vested right. That, that is completely different than the situation here. First, we have no statute. Second, in the zoning context, as we put forth in a brief, you have a property owner who has property rights, and they're making changes to their property. Or in the planning context, you have a developer who has a contract with a property owner who is developing property. They have a right. The question is whether that right is vested. Here, we have an applicant for public, a lease of public trust property. That is not a right, that is not a vested right. It's a mere application. And if the General Assembly wanted to give that person vested rights, they could have easily done so. They've given zoning applications that those rights. Now, the other, the, the other thing is, in, in the, in the zoning context, you're talking typically about a municipality's changing in ordinance. You're not talking about the General Assembly, who have plenary authority over fisheries. And, and, and my, my brothers over here cited the Constitution, Article One, Section Seventeen, and he talked about the right of fisheries. They left out the second part, the nineteen seventy amendment to that statute, which to that, I'm sorry, that Rhode Island Constitution, which says, it shall be the duty of the General Assembly to provide for the conservation of the air, the land, the water, plant, animal, mineral, and other natural resources of the state, and to adopt all means necessary and proper by law to protect the natural environment, and it goes on. There, we have a case, not, we're not talking about a municipality who's changing its ordinance. We're talking about the General Assembly.
Mr. Wagner, pardon me for interrupting, but the, the does the controversy in the Cavaney case was due to an amendment to the state law. So it wasn't the town changing its zoning ordinance, it was legislature enacting a statute. And in the Cavaney case, they clearly say, we only give statutes retroactive effect when the legislature clearly expresses such an application. And they cite Dion versus Best-Eaten Donuts, nineteen ninety-four case.
Yeah, and the Supreme Court.
That's not based just on a town's zoning matter.
Understood. And, and the Supreme Court has also said, as we, we've said, it's not only the clear language of this, of the statute. It'd be preferable if they, they said this is retroactive. We, we don't have that here. What we do have, though, is a necessary implication by the words of the statute that it has to, there's no other way to look at that than, than it, that it applies retroactively. Because they're saying that this is an undeveloped cove. We want it to remain undeveloped. There shall be not only no commercial development, but there shall, it shall not be modified from its current undeveloped state. And that can only mean, not to the future, that can only be, that, that's it. There's no, that's the only way that could be interpreted, as a necessary implication of a retroactive application.
So, Mr. Wern, I, I do have a question about that, because I, I was looking at the statute, and it seems to me that in the first, so we're looking at thirty-two-one-five-point-two B, and there seem to be two sentences in that section. And the first sentence refers to what Mr. Bowen was talking about earlier, which is the water that runs from Sapawat easterly to the bridge, and then southerly perpendicular to Sapawat Avenue. That says shall not be at any time commercially developed, or in any way modified from its current undeveloped state. The second sentence, however, which is talking about the water at the mouth of the marsh for a distance of two thousand feet from the bridge to Sapawat Point, measured in a southerly direction, that doesn't have that same at any time language. So what's the difference between those two sections?
My, my reading of section. Yeah, so I don't know, but my reading of section B is it all applies to Sapawat Cove, which is the first phrase there. Sapawat Cove, comma, and my reading is that it, it, that, that cove, that cove, which is the entire and the, the whole cove, shall not at any time be commercially developed. That's my reading of the statute. I, I don't know what else, else to tell you about it.
So, so the legislature has expanded the Sapawat Management Area to draft in and include this area of, of the bay.
Yeah, I think Section A talks about the land, and the Bowens are right, that the, the that they, they allow leasing of the land, which has happened in the past. And if you look at the earlier sections of this, this statute, you look at the whole statute, not just this section, but the whole statute, they talk about leasing land for, for agriculture. But here we have, and let's look at the title of the statute. Sapawat Marsh Management, Prohibition of Development. So the first, A, talks about the land, the limitations of the land, B, talks about the coves, Sapawat Cove. And, and C, just defines passive outdoor recreation.
Well, conservation, management of fish and wildlife, how, how is it that that doesn't include oyster farm?
Because if you, in our brief, we, we showed you that development is defined by the C R M C to, to include, and I don't have it with me. John, do you have that? First of all, it's a commercial aquaculture farm that they're asking for. It shall not be commercially developed at any time. But what we put in our brief is the definition of development, I think. But modification from its current undeveloped state. I don't know how you get an aquaculture farm with modification from its undeveloped state. I, I don't know how you get that.
Yes, if I may address that phrase, current undeveloped state, as I previously noted, these are Type One Waters, the most protected as far as C R M C categories go. And this cove includes seawalls, which are not allowed in Type One Waters. So to refer to this area as current undeveloped state is disingenuous. Presence of seawalls not allowed in Type One Waters would indicate that this body of water being referred to as Sapawat Cove has in fact been developed at some point in time.
Seawalls aren't in the coves. Let's just use common sense here, and their grandfather. Mr. Krieger at Heights. Yeah, the, the definition by the C R M C for development is any material change and the use of any, and it goes on and includes water. So any material change is development. That's prohibited under the statute. Some of the arguments, I don't know if you want us to address some of these arguments that are, that are not relevant to the issues here about ex post facto laws, spot zoning, and things like that. I don't think it's necessary to. I think we can agree that the, the, the issue here is whether this statute applies to this application. I think that's really the only issue. We, we, the, the statute clearly is a prohibition of development. I don't think that's, anybody could read that statute, not C, could say, well, we're not located there, or it's ambiguous because, you know, we come up with all these nonsense reasons. It's not ambiguous. It's very clear with the statute. It's a prohibition. Doesn't matter what the legislated, this legislator said or that legislator said. The intent comes from the meaning of the words of the statute. Their plain and ordinary meaning, it's prohibited use. The only question is, does this apply to this application? And our position is that, on, on the, in the first instance, they have no vested rights, so it doesn't. And, and, and there's no statute that gives them, and frankly, the C R M C is, is restricted and constrained by the statutes. And, and we cited the case to you on that in, in more than one place. But you have to understand, the, the C R M C is a, a, a entity created by the General Assembly. And the General Assembly can take away the powers of the C R M C. It did so here. It said that in that cove, you can't have any assent. And, and the C R M C hat is, is restrained by, by its enabling legislation. It's restrained by its, its own regulations, the Red Book. It's restrained by the management procedures and the A P A. And here, there's nothing in any of those documents that gives an applicant vested rights. So you can't just invent the vested rights where they don't exist.
Mr. Mr. Wern, if I could go back to that, you know, because I'm actually looking at the, the Cavaney case, and actually, there's another case, the, which is.
Is that C, Cavaney with a C or?
A K. It's a, it's a K E, K A B E N Y, the Town of Cumberland. Zoning Board Review. And there's actually a case that cites Cavaney, and that's East Bay Community Development Corporation versus Zoning Border Review.
Yep.
And that's at nine zero one Atlantic, second eleven thirty-six.
Yep. So I. What's the year of that case?
That's two thousand and six, and that's another Supreme Court case. So both of these cases, actually, they're, I, I was mistaken. It's not in the zoning context, that they will come in as comprehensive permit applications. And I, I know that in your briefs, you had touched on the, I, I believe it was comprehensive permit applications. And they're vesting once an application's approved, and you have master plan approval. But these cases are applied towards, once you submit the application, I don't know, it's necessarily vesting, but it's saying that the law that should be applied is the law that was in place at the time of the application.
Yeah, so.
That's the case. And I understand your argument with zoning, but how does it?
Okay, so in, in the planning context, it, it, it's, it's even harder. You can't just have a substantially complete application and say, okay, we're vesting. In the planning context, you have to have a, a approval from the planning board of a master plan approval. So they have to have an approval. Then you have something. You're a developer who spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on an engineer. They say to get to the master plan approval, you get an approval. The statute says you have a vested right now to be, to be considered under the, the old dispensation, the, the way the statute used to run. And then it goes back to the time of your application. That's right. But they have an approval, so you have a vesting that happens. You have a contractual right to develop that property. Usually, it's a developer. If it's not, it's a property, or they have a property right. Here, we have a person without any rights who has a pending application. That's not a vested right. It can't all of a sudden become a vested right because there's no statute that allows that to happen.
Well, when the Supreme Court is addressing this matter in both of these cases, they don't use the word vested right. they don't use the word vested rights.
That's probably, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's probably made, that's why I asked what date they were done. I don't know if it was before the statutes were enacted for vesting rights or not. And as you know, the zoning and planning has changed dramatically in the last year. So there are completely different statutory frameworks for planning and zoning over the over the last year. So I'd be happy to look at those cases and see if they're, to what extent they are.
Oh, the East Bay, the East Bay case says, we declined, and they're referencing that Cavity, which was decided earlier, says, we declined to retroactively apply various amendments to the act in our analysis of the matter then before us because the amendments lacked the requisite clear expression of retroactive application. And that's what that's what these cases say. If if the legislature wanted it to be retroactive, it would have said so.
It didn't have to say so. I understand you, it didn't have to say so because there was no development here. There was no, under any, any case law in the in the universe, there was no, nothing that said that a mere applicant for at the C R M C has any vested rights. So there was no reason to say it was retroactive. And 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 if you look at the the word they used at any time, I think there's a necessary implication.
I've had an opportunity to look at the Cavity case, if I could be heard on that.
Absolutely.
Um, it's from two thousand and five, and it dealt with the State Housing Appeals Board, which hears appeals from plans that are either approved or denied at the municipal level. So at the time it came before the Supreme Court, there was a decision from a lower zoning or planning board. And in this case, it looks like because a comprehensive permit was requested. According to Rhode Island Housing, the there's specific vesting language that's associated with this particular type of application. And it says, the approved preliminary plan is vested for a period of two years with the right to extend for two one-year extensions upon written request. That would be akin to the application either being approved or denied, and then the state law going into effect at that time during the pendency of appeal. So they're two completely separate jurisdictional and venue settings. And I don't think you can apply that scenario to what we've got here. This is just an application that was submitted. There's been no promise of an approval or suggestion of a denial.
And in fact, in that case, from what I've heard, it got preliminary plan approval. So that's not just master plan approval. That means they got all the engineers involved, they had skin in the game, they spent a lot of money on on experts. And so you could understand why the legislature would want to give vested rights to someone who has put all that effort, time and money into the the project.
Well, are you saying that the that's not the case with the applicant?
I am.
That they've they haven't invested any time or money in this?
Yes, I'm 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 saying that 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 if you look at that this case in general, there really is nothing compared to, you know, what you have in a in a in a development project that you have before the Supreme Court. I they they haven't even spent money on lawyers.
Maybe that's a good idea.
It might be, yeah, we'll find out.
Yes, we will.
But I I think if you look at the, some of the cases we we've cited, the the Supreme Court does look at the public interest and compares it to the fairness for the applicant. And I cited a case, the Anheuser-Busch case, where it does that. And I think it's Lawrence versus Anheuser-Busch. And and they seem to, that's the case where they 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 looked at those factors, the Hockman test from the Harvard Law Review. And they looked at three factors.
It was a three factor test.
Yes, they looked at first the nature and strength of the public interest served by the statute. They looked at the extent to which the statute modifies or aggregates the asserted preenactment right. And they looked at the nature of the right which the statute alters. So I would suggest to you, if if you look at those three factors, this is not even a close call. There's no vested rights here. First instance, the general, as we've said already many times, the General Assembly has the power, the authority and the duty to determine what is in the public interest in with respect to the natural environment. Here, the General Assembly has determined that it's in the public interest to prohibit any commercial development at any time. It's a power code. And as as I've already said, this also includes the power to to expand or narrow the mandate of the C R M C. So clearly, the public interest here, there's no question that we have a very strong public interest. When it comes to coastal management and preservation of natural resources, the General Assembly determined that it is in the public interest to prohibit commercial development there. If you look at the second factor, the extent to which the statute modifies
So would you say that again, that saying that the General Assembly has concluded that it doesn't serve the public interest?
Yes, the 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 General Assembly has concluded through this statute, the Sepalit Cove, development, all commercial development should be prohibited in Sepalit Cove. And in fact, went even further, they say, shall not at any time be commercially developed or in any way modified from its current undeveloped state. This is the public interest of the state as per the General Assembly. We looked at the Rhode Island Constitution, which gives them that power, that authority and that duty, that duty of the General Assembly to establish the public interest. So this isn't, this isn't a zoning case where an ordinance is changed. This is the, this is the General Assembly making a change in the law with respect to fisheries where they have the plenary of power to do so. It's completely different than the zoning context.
So in all of the waters of the state, going up to Providence, the Secoque River, everything that falls under the jurisdiction of C R M C, the legislature in their infinite wisdom has determined that only this little section of the state deserves to be forever commercial free?
If it, if that's all it did, that would be fine. But no, there are, there are a lot of places that the state and this federal government have decided are off limits. And and we put that in our brief, too. This is not, there's nothing unusual about the 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 General Assembly saying development is prohibited in this area, whether it's in the water or on the land, it happens all the time. There's nothing untoward about it because they have the power to do it. So, yeah, if if in their infinite wisdom, they did this, and and that is the public interest. That's what the Rhode Island Constitution says, that's what the Rhode Island Supreme Court says. It says they have plenary authority. That means, that's it, you don't get higher than plenary authority. This is not, this is not the Jamestown Zoning Board saying we, or or the City Council changing the zoning ordinance and and screwing over a landowner who has a application for a variance. This is something completely different. And and so I think when you look at that first factor that the Supreme Court looks at, this is a very strong public interest here in prohibiting development. You have to take the 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 legislature at its word here, you just have to read the statute. So I think you have a strong, and I can go through the other factors, but you don't seem like you're you're all that interested in them, so.
Well, I read them.
Okay.
But if you want to put them in the record.
Well, I just
The edification of the Bowens, maybe you want
Yeah, the the second factor is the extent to which the statute modifies or aggregates the asserted preenactment right. Again, that's just what we talked about already. What was the preenactment right that the Bowens had when they had, they had a pending application? So they had, again, I said it a million times, they have no property interest, they have no contract, they have no statute for a vested right to use public trust property in Sepalit Cove. They had nothing. So if you look at that factor, it it it, it does not bode well for the for vested rights because they don't have something. It's not like they can say they had, we have a lease agreement from the C R M C. We should be, we we should be considered having a vested right. They don't have any of that. The third, the third factor was this nature of the right, which is statute alters, which is very similar. Again, Supreme Court has has made clear that the General Assembly has plenary, that means unqualified or absolute power over fisheries. And it's also made clear that the General Assembly determines what's in the public interest. So looking at those three factors that in that case, the Lawrence versus Anheuser-Busch case, there's no, there's no vested rights here. They had, there's no non-statutory vested rights. And and there's really no, there's no serious argument that there's any, there's any constitutional problem with the statute. I, we've already gone through the state constitution, the Rhode Island Supreme Court. There's no serious argument that that's the case. I'd be happy to talk about any of the other, I don't really want to get into some of the other diversions. The seawalls is is is, I don't think it's worth responding to.
If I may address the issue of vested rights. As two Rhode Islanders, we entered into a good faith agreement with the state of Rhode Island in December two thousand and nineteen. And that began with a preliminary determination hearing before the Tiverton Harbor Commission. When we left that meeting, we had the approval of the Tiverton Harbor Commission to continue the process. From that process, we went on to obtain approvals from the same Rhode Island D E M, which oversees Sepalit Management Area. We received their approvals from the Marine Fisheries Council and from the Division of Fish and Wildlife for our very specific application, for which much time was invested and of which we had faith that it would be continued through a well-established process. We have also received an actual permit from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, which is very specific to the place and type exactly the application which we submitted. I would further suggest that there have been two staff reports written regarding our application, which could be construed as favorable. And so in each of these approvals, akin to a zoning approval or a board approval through a zoning process, we had an understanding that we were vested very much in this process. And what has occurred is this process has been delayed by the request of objectors attorneys. And simultaneous to this delay, there have been not one, not two, but three efforts to usurp this administrative process through the state legislature, which we all can agree. The state legislature controls the C R M C. But I think we can also agree that the C R M C generally is in charge of the waters of the state. And many of the same people who complain about what they do with aquaculture are the same ones who apply for permits to fix seawalls and permits to install septic systems within that two hundred foot zone. And so I might submit that we are a part of this process and that is part of the public trust that anyone who applies for an aquaculture farm in this state is entitled to due process. And this is a bad law, and we wouldn't have wasted an hour here if it were not. So I would submit that there is a lot of ambiguity in this law. And there are certainly, certainly constitutional issues, especially if we're talking about commercial fishing in this same area. Thank you.
The General Assembly has many rights. They do not have the right to pass a law that's in violation of the Constitution. And I would submit that this is in violation of the Constitution. And that was section
Article one, section seventeen.
Well, section six.
Article six, section one.
Article six, section one, says that they cannot, that a law in, that's in conflict with the Constitution is void.
Thank you. Did you have any, anything else to add?
No, if you have more questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I, you know, we disagree that there's any constitutional infirmities here, there, there really is no due process issue here. We'd be happy to address any questions you have, if you want supplemental briefing on any of these issues, we're happy to provide it. If there is some question that the Bowens have raised or that we have raised, if you want, you have a question about, we'd be happy to provide supplemental briefing on it. If you want us to address these these two cases, the Cavity case, we'd be happy to do it. I just want to make your your difficult job easier. So let us know what you need.
Thank you very much for the offer. We'll, we'll see after we get the transcript. Go on for the transcript. Any comments, gentlemen? I would only like to emphasize that this law is preceded by thirty-two dash one dash five. The language of which makes very clear
That was the other park, the
That's correct. So so the language in this law is very much taken from the John Curran State Park. And the precursor to which makes very clear that the state, through the D E M, has the ability to let, rent, lease any part of the base of it.
Can I be heard on that, Mr. Herrn? Sorry.
Sorry.
Could I be heard on it?
Absolutely.
A couple of points here. We were also going to reference that state law about the John Curran State Park as well as another law known as Snake Den Park. Within Title thirty-two, Chapter one, there are many similar state laws like the one that we are talking about here tonight. Some of them have been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. If there were a constitutional issue with the conservation of a particular part of Rhode Island, I've not heard of it. These laws have been on the books for a long time. Like we said, the legislature speaks for the people. If the people want a particular area conserved, then that's what the legislature moves forward with. With respect to the first part of the statute at issue that talks about D E M having the power to grant approvals, that does nothing to assist with the pending application at C R M C. If D E M is the authority that should be hearing these matters, then why is C R M C involved with the application process moving forward? Maybe it should be, maybe the the applicants should be transferring their application materials over to the Department of Environmental Management. I don't think the beginning of that statute is helpful to the applicant's case here. I think the second part of the statute is what we are talking about with respect to Sepalit and the submerged lands that C R M C has jurisdiction over. D E M's agricultural jurisdiction and the State's Right to Farm Act are completely separate, so I just, I want that distinction made. They're very, very different. Two different agencies.
May I speak on that? In order to conduct I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair's control.
In order to conduct aquaculture in Rhode Island, a D E M permit is required. In addition to the C R M C area, D E M permits the activity. So D E M does have a vested interest in aquaculture.
I don't think they issue a permit. I'm pretty sure the the Marine Fish
It's an aquaculture license.
I'm pretty sure there is a division within D E M that looks at the application that's submitted to, I'm sorry, I should be looking at you. The D E M will look at materials submitted to the C R M C and render what's similar to an advisory opinion. But for purposes of aquaculture farming, C R M C is the jurisdictional agency. And then for purposes of the lease, which is the second step of the process, the C R M C negotiates that lease, and then it has to go through the State Properties Committee. So there are processes in place and for purposes of vested rights, you have to get through all of those processes in order to have an expectation of some kind of business relationship or financially backed expectation, as the U S Supreme Court has said. And an application that's merely pending for the C R M C doesn't get you there. You're still years away from getting a lease approved by the State Properties Committee at this point.
Mr. Grant, I want to address a point because I think I I see the the vesting issue a little bit differently than the objectors do. Looking at the Anheuser-Busch case, seems to me, this is the this would be the basement for that the U S Supreme Court setting. But that doesn't mean that the Rhode Island Supreme Court can't set its own rules. And what I'm reading from the Cavity case and from the East Bay C D C case is that they're saying if you have an application in, that's when the law that's going to govern the application lies.
After you've established that you have an approval. Not, then you go, then you go back to the applicants. I haven't read the case yet, but I'm sure what it says is, once you, once you have an approval, then you look back to the date the application was first filed. And if they had vested rights, I wouldn't disagree with that, but they have no vested rights.
I mean, if, I think it's a matter of looking at the case, it's
You want me to read the case?
Right. I'm kidding. I mean, the, the thing is, the uh the court does treat it as a threshold issue, and I think it's a threshold issue here. Um, and, and to me, it, it seems like the court's pretty straightforward about it, that it's, it doesn't necessarily bring in factors such as when or not it was approved. Um, but it, 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 it just is straightforward if you have the application and that's the law at the time.
Let me ask you this. If, if this were akin to a zoning or planning uh forum, and you're talking about vested rights, um wouldn't uh, wouldn't this law be considered spot zoning?
No, first of all, it, if we talk about planning, they wouldn't have, they have no approvals, so they would have no vested right in the, in the planning context. The plan, the statute with respect to planning requires at least master plan approval to get vested rights. So someone who has an application before the planning board, similar to what we have here. Uh, and, and it, and it could take a couple of years, but they get before the planning and they still don't have, and the law changes, they have no vested right because they have no master plan approval. So it's not, it's not equivalent. Now, spot zoning would have to be, they'd have to show that it's somehow inappropriate for, for the, uh, well, you couldn't even say it because spot zoning applies to municipalities, I, but, but you'd have to say that the General Assembly in their plenary authority somehow uh somehow uh arbitrarily designated this area of protection. Well, we have plenty of reasons to, to realize this is an arbitrary. We have a public parking space there. We have a, a protected area. They spent all this money to buy land from D E M. This isn't just deciding arbitrarily, hey, let's protect that because we don't like the Bowens. This is, this has been years in the making of making that a, a, a special place over there. So we, I don't think you can show that the, the uh designation of that place as a prohibition of development is, is arbitrary in any way.
Well, it seems curious. Maybe not arbitrary, but certainly curious that um of all the uh, the waterways and so forth, that they've decided to set this uh small area aside.
Well, I think it's consistent with the, the incredible opposition that this particular application has had.
Well, that's true. Thank you. Okay, well, uh once we get the transcript, we'll uh be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the meeting at this point. We thank you for your attendance.